Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody this morning. First thing we do with our morning session, we always have an invocation. And today, we have a special guest that's going to come and do our invocation, Mr. R.E. Dean, who is the chaplain for Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company Number One Station. And he's going to come and lead us in the invocation. If everyone could stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Today is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. Almighty God, we thank you this morning for this Board of Supervisors, these ladies and gentlemen that give abundantly to this county. We thank you for their knowledge. We thank you for all that they do. We know that this is not an easy task, and you cannot please everyone. So we thank you very much for what they do, and we certainly appreciate it. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to officially call to order the May 2nd Board of Supervisors Morning Session Meeting and ask Supervisor Rosenberg if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as far.
Okay, we have an agenda before us. Any additions or deletions to the agenda this morning, or motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. I'll turn it over to our County Administrator, John Eggersen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. We have just one item on consent this morning. The board will consider acceptance of a donation and a budget amendment in the amount of $1,000 for the Animal Services Department. At the request of the donor, La Baron Rescue and Sanctuary, these funds are to be used for veterinary services.
Move for approval. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the minutes. Any changes to the minutes for our April 4th AM or PM meeting?
Move to approve.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, we have six items of general county business. First, the board will discuss and consider approval of a proclamation establishing May 2023 as Older Americans Month. And I'll turn this over to our County Administrator, John Eggersen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This proclamation was requested by the Aging Together Organization, and it is one we have done previously. But I'd like to read this into the record and seek the board's approval. This is a proclamation for Older Americans Month 2023. Whereas Culpeper County includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community; and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently; and whereas Culpeper County recognizes our need to create a community that offers the services and supports older adults may need to make choices about how they age; and whereas Culpeper County can work to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors that May 2023 is Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to celebrate our older citizens, help create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging.
Thank you, John. Entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved. Second.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Okay, the board will discuss and consider approval of a proclamation establishing May 2023 as Drug Court Month. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a proclamation for Drug Court Month of May of 2023. I'd like to recognize Andrew Lawson. Andrew, if you want to come forward, please feel free to do so. And I will read this into the record and be seeking approval from the board. Whereas the Culpeper County Circuit Drug Court was established on March 1st, 2022; and whereas drug treatment courts have been restoring lives and families for more than three decades; and there are more than 4,000 treatment courts nationwide that have served an estimated 1.5 million individuals; and whereas Drug Treatment Court uses a team of court and community professionals to help ensure individuals who are addicted to drugs and/or alcohol receive the intensive treatment they need to become healthy, law-abiding, and productive family and community members; and whereas Drug Treatment Courts can significantly improve substance use disorder treatment outcomes, substantially reduce addiction and related crimes, and do so at less expense; and whereas Treatment Courts facilitate community-wide partnerships bringing together public safety and public health professionals; and whereas Treatment Courts improve education, employment, housing, and financial stability, and promote family reunification; and whereas Treatment Courts change the way the justice system responds to substance use and mental health disorders by combining accountability with evidence-based treatment; and whereas the Board of Supervisors recognizes the vital contributions Drug Court has brought our justice system, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors declare the month of May 2023 to be Drug Court Month in Culpeper County.
We have our first graduation next Tuesday, and everyone is invited at 2:30 in a circuit courtroom. And then we're going to have a little reception in the courtyard afterwards. Very excited. It's our first graduation. We would like everyone to attend.
Thank you, Andrew. Good work. There's a proclamation over there for you. Kim, our deputy clerk, has that? Thank you, sir. Okay. Next, the board will-
Are we going to vote on it?
I'm sorry. We do need a vote to approve the proclamation. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we don't approve the proclamation. Personally, we have approved the Drug Court as perhaps something that will work. We have supported funding for it. I appreciate the job that Andrew is doing. That said, the "whereas's" are what we had not determined and what we're trying to find out. So all of stating that it definitively works, it brings the community together, et cetera, et cetera. I hope that's true, but we don't have any evidence to support what we had in the "whereas's." So therefore, I move we... It's a little early to be celebrating it, and I'm not sure we need to be naming months after courts.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the proclamation as presented in response to Supervisor Underwood. I remember Commonwealth Attorney years ago, before this program was started, and this statement has resonated with me ever since, that in the past, what we were doing was not working. And if we don't try something different, nothing's going to change. And I commend Mr. Lawson with the work that he's done. It's proof that next Tuesday, we're going to have this graduation. And again, anything we can do to prevent recidivism where there's a revolving door, I greatly appreciate.
Okay. Any further discussion? I will say that I agree with Mr. Bates, and I think you've done a good job with implementing this new Drug Court program. And anything that we can do to improve our community along those lines to prevent drugs in our community, then I'm all for it. So with that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Ellis, I think it's 6-1 in favor. Okay, the board will consider adoption of the proposed tax rates for calendar year 2023. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning again, members of the board. As you know, we held our public hearing regarding the budget and tax rates on April 18th. And this morning, as part of our business for the May meeting, we will be seeking adoption of the tax rates, followed by adoption of the budget, the capital improvements plan, and an appropriation resolution, which will close out our budget process for the fiscal year '24 budget preparation. Beginning with the tax rates, you will see on board docs that there are actually two different versions there. Kim, if you would maybe open up that first attachment. This was what we advertised, which keeps all personal property taxes unchanged from the current year. The tax rate for real estate would be at 46 cents. That would be 39 cents for general fund and 7 cents for the fire and rescue levy. And that is about 2 cents over the equalization rate. So it would equate to a 2-cent increase in real estate tax. We also have a second version prepared in there that would set the rate at 45 cents, 1 penny less, and still 1 penny above equalization. That would be doable by adding some projected revenue from meals tax and understanding that we're also earning more interest than anticipated, thanks to our treasurer who is here. So either of those options is on the table for you this morning. Valerie has prepared not only the two sets of tax rates, but two different budgets, depending on what tax rates you adopt. So we are prepared with whichever version the board reaches agreement on.
Thank you, John. Questions, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the rates as presented with the alternative of 45 cents in aggregate for real estate tax.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, coming into the meeting this morning, I was fully prepared to support the 45 cents tax rate. Looking back over the past several months, I've attended several functions with our volunteer fire and rescue. And for the record, let me just say that if it wasn't for the volunteers that we have in this county, the fire and rescue, we would not be sitting here having this discussion on having either the lowest or next to the lowest tax rate in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I think every one of us in this room owes a great sense of gratitude to the volunteers of this community that step into harm's way when we're running away from it. That said, the issues that have come forward with the volunteers, we have a fund, and our capital improvement fund, that is funded every year with about $200,000 for major improvements, whether it be for buildings or equipment. At $200,000 a year, the needs that are arising, one being air packs, they're looking at $1.2 million in replacing air packs. When you talk about a replacement truck at $900,000 for the cabin chassis, when you look at taking our fire and rescue, or firehouses, and equipping them eventually, and I hope it's later than sooner for a full-paid career staff, these needs are here now. And we look at the increase of houses that are coming to Culpeper. The demand on these resources is ever increasing. That said, I would like to see that the board consider a 46 cents. And the caveat with that would be that 1 penny of that would be earmarked for the Volunteer Fire and Rescue CIP Fund, that that money would be put directly into that. Therefore, it would not change the money that was coming, that the county would receive. So I would, I'd like to get some input on that.
Expenditures. That said, 1 cent in the real estate tax right now is a little over $800,000. I believe that even where we are at 45 cents, we're likely to end up more than $800,000 in the good. So in my opinion, we have plenty of flexibility at 45 cents. But I completely support Mr. Bates's thought of us allocating more towards CIP for fire and rescue.
I also agree, but I think with the upcoming schools that either need replaced or renovated, as well as the amount of money that we need to put towards roads with these increased houses, with the growth that Culpeper's seeing with industry and all of those, that 46 cents is more, puts us better prepared for what's coming up in the future. It'll pay down a lot of debt service if we have to build a new middle school, because we don't want to see what happened FY 1213, where we had to increase the tax by 8 cents. So with the fire and rescue, schools, roads, those are the things that are most important to our community. And I think we need to be fiscally responsible in preparing for the upcoming future.
I'm optimistic that this board is fiscally responsible. We've had a long track record of lowering taxes. We do have large projects that are coming that will increase our tax base, specifically relative to data centers. We have discussion on this meeting later today about establishing a separate tax rate for a large category. So I completely understand the need for infrastructure improvements. I think we can do so without raising taxes to 46 cents on our constituents.
Well, I agree with everyone's point. I'll be honest. And as far as Mr. Bates's proposal, there's no better place to put $800,000 than with our Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association. And I agree with everything he said about we wouldn't be in the situation we're in now with the taxes where they are now if it wasn't for our volunteers. And I agree with Mr. Underwood that we are very fiscally responsive. And I think past boards have been very fiscically responsive as well, or we wouldn't be in the shape we are in now. And I think we have been great stewards of keeping the tax rates low, providing services to our constituents smartly, intelligently, and also providing quality-of-life projects like we've done the last five years. It's been amazing. So our fiscal accountability is there. It's been there for years and years and years. And that's why we're talking about a 44 to 46, 44 to 46 cent tax rate. I would ask, is there any coming to terms with what Mr. Bates has proposed as far as can we give a half a penny if we go to the 46 cents to fire and rescue? Would that make sense? Then the rest, as Ms. Gagino proposed, would go to the, you know, for the future, for the responsibilities we have with the schools, roads, et cetera. So I would throw that out there.
Mr. Chairman, would it be the will of the board if we were to go with Mr. Underwood's motion that we earmark or we could allocate, you say, a half a penny at that 45 cent rate, that would go into the Public Safety CIP Fund?
I'd support that.
So with that, that's taking another half a cent away from the county in which we're already banking on the meals tax making up for the 1%. So it would have to make up for a percentage and a half of the tax rate. We don't have good numbers on the meal tax. Yes, we think that we're comfortable with, if we go with 45, that the meals tax will cover the difference from where we would be in the red to where we would need to be. But I would be very hesitant to support decreasing the 45 even further to earmark more for CIP. I'm comfortable doing it at the 46, but definitely not at the 45.
I would agree with Ms. Gagino. We know that we have some major capital expenses that are facing us down the road, fire and rescue, schools, roads. These are all coming at us, and they're going to be big numbers. I think we need to be very careful. We don't know what we're going to receive from our restaurant tax. So I think we should have our budget this year, as it is set, at 46 cents. And no one likes to raise taxes. I don't, no one on this board does. But I think it's fiscally responsible to do this now in a small way, 2 cents is a small tax increase, and move forward. And I would support a penny going to fire and rescue.
Mr. Chairman, I think you have needed disposal. The motion is on the floor, and then we take up another one.
So we're-
Restate the motion.
Restate the motion?
Sure, that we approve the alternative as recommended by staff that shows a total 45 cents real estate tax.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Yes, Kathy seconded.
Yes, she seconded, yes. Kind of raise your hands with that, please. Okay. All opposed? Like sign. Okay. So that motion failed? 5 to 2, Ms. Ellis. Open the floor up for another motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board adopt a 46 cent tax rate with the caveat that 1 penny of that would be allocated to the Public Safety CIP Fund.
Second.
So with this, it would actually be different than what staff recommended. We would have one more for the fire and rescue and one less for General County. Okay, just for clarification.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Okay, once again, it's 5-2 this time, Ms. Ellis, in favor of the motion. Okay, thank you. All right, the board will consider adoption of the proposed operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2024. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on board docs, we did have two different versions of the budget. And based upon the action that was just taken, Valerie will need to actually create a third version. But we can still adopt the budget today with the understanding that it looks like the one that's posted based on a 46 cent real estate tax. But we'll have to make the adjustment that 1 penny of that goes directly into that Public Safety Capital Fund, and that we do incorporate the additional revenue from meals tax and interest collection in order to make up that particular penny of real estate.
Thank you, John. Questions, comments? Or entertain a motion?
Just a question, I would guess. Does this include in the current year $4 million for the building of a, building for school administration?
Mr. Underwood, that money was in the CIP previously. So it's there, but I don't know that it will end up being ultimately used for that purpose. As we know, we've kind of taken a different direction there. So it'll most likely be repurposed.
Okay, could we, even if it isn't repurposed, could we adjust that to a figure that would be more reflective of the current office market? So I mean, to me, we have an alternative to replace or to do something cheaper than that. And the office market is not getting stronger. So I don't want to take away from the schools. I'm fine keeping 4 million. I just would like to have the budget reflect that we're not, we're not going to spend more than 2.5 towards that particular use if we were going to do it. So line item's the same, but just clarifying that language in the details of the budget.
Mr. Underwood, I'm trying to think through what you're, what you're asking here. I understand the question. It's just, it is prior-year funding, so it's really not part of the FY '24 budget. Valerie, is that money, that's prior-year funding in the CIP? So it's sitting there. It's not part of what they ultimately turned back into the county. But the schools would have to come back to the board to seek an alternative spending plan for that money.
Okay, great. And I'll move for approval of the budget as outlined.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're on the CIP, right? Okay. There's four of them. Can be very confusing. The board will consider adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2024-2028 Capital Improvements Plan. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the board is fairly familiar with the CIP at this point. Sam has prepared a brief presentation, if you'd like to hear that, to get the summary. Then Sam can come forward and do that. Alternatively, if you'd prefer to just move along, I'll leave that at the discretion of the board.
Well, Sam's on his way, so I think he's on a mission this morning.
Yeah. Keep business moving. Morning, Mr. Chairman. And I don't have to go through this if the, if the board doesn't want me to go through it. There has not been many changes since March, when we did present to the board. Really, changes were to push school funding for the middle school out a year, at least in the CIP, and then actually take out $500,000 that was allocated towards the pool that is not needed at this point. I'm going to skip through. Grand total you're looking at in the, this year, this upcoming fiscal year '24 for the capital improvements program is a little better than $22 million. General fund would cover most of that. You see some other sources there. The town portion of 5 million is towards the community pool project. Just compared to last year, it is a growth in the CIP towards capital expenditures. And you see a balloon year potentially next year, but that's largely due to the upcoming middle school project. This graph looks a little better, as far as I'm concerned, considering capital needs than it has in some years. And I say that because there's various categories that seem to be well represented. We have roads, we have public safety, parks and rec, education, and they're all pretty much equal shares this coming fiscal year. From a revenue source, a little better than 75% this year, or 74% will come from the general fund. Specifically, you're looking at T-hanger repairs for the airport, underbuildings and grounds, some additional money that was needed for the Carver Center roof. some additional money that was needed for the Carver Center roof replacement, courthouse security improvements. On the education side, this coming fiscal year, some additional money is allocated towards tennis court renovations, Emerald Hill, heat pump controls and Pearl Sample, new entrance, which has been discussed. We'll potentially keep discussing that as we move forward. Rooftop units also at Pearl Sample and some practice fields and stadium lighting at Culpeper High School. Additionally, this coming fiscal year, the school is allocated towards the department of storage for agricultural department, bus garage, fuel line renovation, and then some additional projects that have not been named at this time. Parks and Rec this year, five point three million. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand of that is for parking lot improvements at Mountain Run Lake Park. The largest project this coming fiscal year will be the community pool project. Public Safety, there's eight hundred thousand for fire and rescue. Additional capital projects at two hundred thousand, so for a total of a million. And the potential coffee wood correction renovations, five million. Public Works, five million allocated towards future revenue sharing projects, which the board is working on with staff now and a consultant, and preparing those applications this year. Application deadline is in the fall or late summer. Potentially towards Reba Road, White Shop Road and other roads. And those would hopefully be a fifty-fifty match with state funding. Public Water and Sewer, a little better than four, or right at four hundred thousand projected there for two projects. And Mr. Chairman, that's as quick as I can get. Happy to entertain any questions.
Very good, Sam. Questions for Sam?
Do we think sixty-eight million dollars would be enough to build a new middle school?
That number, I believe, is a projected renovation number, if I'm not mistaken. I think the Dr. Brad shared with the board during work session that the new middle school price would probably be larger than that.
I'd prefer to see us, even though it's an out year, go to eighty million there so that we're more reflective about there being alternatives.
And right now, that's programmed, Mr. Chairman, to supervisor Underwood, in fiscal year twenty-five.
Yes, but we're approving the five-year plan, so I'm talking about year two. I would like to change that from sixty-eight to eighty.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just, if I could, Sam went through that quickly. But when he went through public safety and he noted the eight hundred thousand that we give that's split evenly amongst the different companies for our volunteers, and then there's the extra line for two hundred thousand additional. And we would, of course, now amend that to be just over a million dollars based on the actions that you've taken earlier.
Okay, thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the appropriation.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the CIP improvements plan for the years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I support everything other than having a number that I believe is insufficient relative to the middle schools. So I'm going to respectfully not support the motion.
Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Ellis, six one? Mr. Underwood? Not in favor? Okay, moving on, the board will consider adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four appropriation resolution. John?
Last item of budget business, Mr. Chairman, is to actually appropriate the funds that have now been approved for fiscal year twenty-four. Again, there were a couple of different versions of this on board docs, but there will need to actually be a third version created, again, based on the actions that you've taken earlier on adopting the budget with the additional penny going to fire and rescue. So we are seeking approval of the board to adopt an appropriation resolution as it will need to be amended.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, just as I have for the last few years, I believe that we're getting a budget of a size that it would make sense to do quarterly appropriations as other comparable sized counties do. So I would, yeah, prefer that we appropriate more frequently because of the uncertain environment. So I will not be in support.
Okay, anybody else? All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next up is Mr. Ennis with our Fiber to the Home Initiative and with All Points Broadband. And it's an initiative we've been working on for several years now. And we're hoping we hear some good news going forward, sir.
Yes, we do.
The floor is yours.
Presentation for you. And our partners from Dominion are going to be up here right after me as well, too. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to provide an update. Last time we met up here was in January and in March, we had a quarterly update. Mr. Underwood was able to join that with DHCD and all the electric partners. So today, we're going to go through a quarterly update. If we can go to the next slide. A quick reminder for, oh, sure. A quick reminder here, All Points is going to deliver four hundred and seventy-eight miles of fiber to serve forty-two hundred and sixty-nine locations. So at the end of the project, by February, all of these folks could sign up for service. Obviously, we don't expect them all to take service on day one, so it'll be a couple of years before all of the folks sign up for their service. All of the benefits for the VADI grant project will extend for a year after that contract ends. So let's say one of these homes has a, an early termination fee on their current satellite service. They can wait till that ends and then they sign up. Six months after the VADI project ends, they'll still get all the same benefits as being a part of the project. Also, we have two partnerships with the electric utilities, Dominion Energy Virginia, Reprohanic Electric Co-op. They participate in the program subject to their own regulations. Overall, the project is about thirty million dollars, of which six point six came from the county. Forty percent of the funding came from All Points Broadband. A little under three million dollars came from Dominion and their contribution for Middle Mile. The remainder was a grant from the Department of Housing and Community Development. The official grant contract started in August of twenty twenty-two. It's going to wrap up in February of twenty twenty-four, at which point all of these customers can sign up for broadband service. Our focus right now is three areas. We're making sure that the Middle Mile fiber is in place for us to connect to and connect to the internet at large. Number two is the utility pole make-ready process. We're in the thick of that right now. We fielded thirty-five hundred poles to date. Skipping the, our internal construction meeting today, so maybe we'll have some more to report to Laura after today. But made a lot of progress on the pole fielding. That is one step in the process of making the poles ready for us to attach our fiber. And as we've discussed previously, we want to get a large queue of all of those poles ready so that when we release our construction crews, they can attach quickly and not have anything in their way. Number three is, once we get the utility poles made ready, we're going to have these queues of miles. So the four hundred and seventy-eight miles of fiber is going to be constructed by All Points contractors. We want to give them as much, as many miles as possible at one time so they can come in. All the poles are ready, all the permits are ready, and that's our focus right now. So the first milestone that we're going to deliver is going to be done in June. So all of our low-level design will be complete. We're going to submit that for review by the county and by DHCD and get that approved. It'll be about four months ahead of our original schedule, but we needed to pull that forward so we can get more miles in the queue for our contractors. All of our materials and deliveries are on schedule, either in inventory or in stock with our distributor. And as a quick reminder here, even if we pay for materials, we don't get reimbursement from the county or the state until we deliver on a milestone in Culpeper. It's a little bit different than some of these programs where if we just show an invoice for buying four hundred miles of fiber, we can get reimbursed on that. We don't actually get reimbursed until those four hundred miles are in the county and constructed. We have some public events scheduled that we'll coordinate with the county. We had one tentatively scheduled in May, but it'll probably be in June for groundbreaking ceremony. And I also wanted to point out that you all have done a good job getting the word out, sending folks to APBfiber.com. Over a third of the residents in the project area have registered. And also, a number of folks outside of the project area as well have expressed interest. As a quick reminder, we can't serve folks outside of the grant area quite yet with this broadband project. We're focused on the unserved, but after that, we'll go outside of the project area. As I mentioned, we had a successful quarterly team meeting with DHCD, all the stakeholders. Laura joined us and Mr. Underwood as well. That was in March with DHCD, presented an update to them. The meeting went well, it was a good opportunity to ask a lot of questions of us and our electric utility partners. We've added the Timmins Group as our primary skilled labor vendor. They've been driving around in the county fielding these poles. I got a picture of their vehicle after this. And we've exceeded thirty-five hundred poles to date. We're doing several thousand a month, so that progress is, we're making a lot of progress on our pole fielding. We've also started work on our APB facility. It's about a mile west of Brandy Station. So one of the questions we get a lot is what's going on in the county? Why aren't we seeing a bunch of big bucket trucks? Well, what happens right now is if the Timmins Group is out there fielding poles, they may not be driving a big pickup truck or a bucket truck. It could just be this, you know, red sedan driving around, taking data and collecting data on utility poles. So in the center of, in the center of the picture here, there's a little camera device on a tripod and then a PVC pole with two red markings to the left. So they hold this pole next to a utility pole and set up the camera. It'll take a picture of the pole, all the attachments on there, and we collect all this data. And then we decide where we want to attach our fiber. We present all these engineered drawings to the respective electric utility. We do some calculations on the sag of the cable between two poles, and it needs to be at least eighteen feet under certain isolating conditions. So if there's a half an inch of ice on the cable, we calculate how far down that would sag in the storm, and that sets the minimum of eighteen feet. And if it's below that, we have to raise the poles or do something else, like add a midspan pole to make sure that there's no cable or any kind of wire in the way of cars or pedestrians. So that minimum is eighteen feet. So that's the process we're going out now, collecting all this data. We run it through a couple of different AI systems and have some engineers review all of this work. And we share through an iterative process with the electric utility what happens, what needs to happen to the pole for our attachment to be made ready. As I mentioned, we've also set up a site off of Brandy Road. So in the back there is going to be a regional laydown yard. And then we're going to have an office and indoor facility there as well. We're getting that area cleaned up. You're going to see a lot of reels and poles and equipment stored there centrally located for us here in the county. So a timeline update, we're still on track for the February twenty twenty-four completion. As I mentioned, the pre-construction milestone, we're going to achieve that in June versus October as we had originally planned. All of the last mile fiber construction milestones have been condensed. So instead of building twenty-five or thirty miles a month spread over a long period, it's going to be closer to forty, eighty, a hundred miles per month, once we get all of those poles made ready. This is a preference for the vendors. They want to bring crews in, work them hard, get all those miles done, and then go on to the next project. And as you can imagine, we're working with, you know, supply chain issues for materials, but also vendor issues. You know, there's a lot of broadband projects going on, so we have to manage our project to meet their preferences. All of the serviceable unit milestones, so that's when a homeowner could sign up, that's going to be consistent and linked to our fiber construction. So a month or two after fiber construction is when we'll light some areas, some neighborhoods, and folks can be able to sign up. So all of the VADI grant-enabled benefits are going to last for a year after someone could sign up. If they miss that window, they can obviously still sign up for service in perpetuity. One of the things that we're doing in our network is we're building a fiber network that can scale up to ten gigabits by ten gigabits to each location. So today, you hear about gigabit broadband. Well, this one's going to last for a long time. We're building it to be ten gigabits in each direction. So for many years down the road, this is going to be a top-of-the-line broadband service for all of these homes. Another thing we're focusing on right now is, as you all know, the data for broadband access is getting better. It's not perfect, but it's getting better. And as we learn more information about where existing providers do and do not have service, you know, additional homes or locations are popping up as being unserved. The other thing that's happening is that the underlying location data from when we submitted our application has gotten better. So we've found some homes inside of the project area polygon that either weren't in the GIS database or have been newly constructed, and we're going to serve these homes. And right now, we have about ninety-five homes that we've identified inside the project area that we're going to serve, no additional cost to the county. And there's three different ways we can serve them. It's All Points Broadband, does its own investment without any kind of county or state funding. Number two is a program called LECAP. This is a line extension program for homes that are, let's say, in a served area, but their driveway is too long and the incumbent provider charges them seven thousand dollars. Well, the state has set up a program for these folks to apply directly for funding to pay for that drop to their home. That's an option if it's a single location, kind of out on its own. We're going to work with the county on those, and if it's not suitable for us, we would point in the direction of Comcast or whomever else could serve them in that program. Number three would be if you have large groups of unserved locations that maybe previously have been reported as being served and were ineligible for grant funding in the last few years, maybe that classification has changed. There's another grant round, grant cycle coming up at the end of this year. So a couple of different options. The best way to help is to send people to APBfiber.com. Based on the address you put in, you get a series of different questions to determine what type of service you have today and which one of these programs you may be eligible for. And we're working with the county to share that data back and forth. So right now, we have ninety-five locations that the VGEN database, that's the E nine-one-one database that the county reports to the state, and that's what we use to base our grant application on. Well, our network design as a engineering has a slightly different database. So we found some extra homes in there that weren't in the state database that we're going to serve, no extra cost to the county or the state. And as we identify additional locations, we'll put them in those categories of one, two, or three. So either All Points Investment, the LECAP Program, or additional state grant funding in the future. These are the ones that we have identified to date and are including them in our initial design. So this is what will happen when you go to APBfiber.com. You put in your address, you click check address. You'll get this notice on the left-hand side that says you're inside a planned service area. So you can't sign up for service yet, but you are in the planned service area. And we ask people to put in their name, their contact info, and then click the button, go to survey, and you'll answer some questions about the servicing in your neighborhood. You don't have to do this to be part of the project. If you're one of those forty-two hundred and sixty-nine homes or businesses, you're in the project, you don't have to pre-register. But this is how we contact people about ninety days in advance of when they can sign up. So go here, give us your name, your email address, your phone number. Click go to survey, and that'll automatically put you in the database. We're not going to spam you with a bunch of emails. We're going to tell you when you can start, sign up, about 90 days in advance. That'll be in addition to flyers and yard signs and other advertising. So, with that, I welcome any questions.
First, thank you for the update. I'm glad that you're out. I guess fielding poles means inspecting poles, right?
Yes, so they're going out there, they're taking...
Yeah, that thing...
That device, I think it's called an Ike. So, they take that and they... The tripod, they set it up. Another fielder would hold the white pole next to the utility pole so that there's an idea for scale. So, they inspect that, and they document all of the attachments, the heights, everything that's on an existing pole. So, we've done that for, I think it's 3,579 was the last time I checked, spread between the two electric utility providers. And then we take that information, we decide where and which poles we want to attach to. We end up attaching to probably 90% of the poles that we survey. If the pole needs to move up or down or, you know, have a transformer changed, then we'll go through that exercise with the respective utility pole owner.
Okay, that gets... You were getting to the next part of my question. So, of the 3,500, you estimate something will need to be done to, what, about 350?
It'll be 15 to 20% overall.
Okay. So, about 700. Are the util... And then who actually does that? Is that you or the utility provider that changes the pole?
It's a contractor for the utility or the utility, the pole owner themselves. But as an attacher, we have our engineers do all the engineering work. The electric utility or the pole owner, they do engineering work as well, and then the attacher pays the bill.
Okay. So, they do the work, you pay the bill. And what I'm wondering is, if I remember, there are going to be about 10,000 poles that are going to be fielded.
Right.
So, you're about a third of the way through that, and you seem to think that we're 15 to 20% are going to need something done. So, that means there's going to be about 2,000 poles that something has to be done. Is that going to be done by October?
Yes, and so if there's a series of poles where there's an inordinate amount of work to be done...
Yeah.
Then we would go underground. And so, if the amount of work on a pole either costs too much or takes too much time or can't get the transformer in time, then we would switch and we would go underground and avoid the make-ready time and cost.
Okay, so are the utility providers confident that they can meet the schedule of having the poles ready by, I guess, October?
Yes, so all of our agreements with both electric utility partners have us at a throughput that meets the timeline.
Great. I mean, I hope that's the case. It's a... To me, it's going to be incredulous to watch that much fiber run between November and February after watching that many poles be replaced between, I guess, June and October, but if it... I hope that it happens.
It's a lot of work. One of the reasons we were bringing forward all of that design and that first milestone was to make sure we got that out the door earlier than we had planned.
Great.
Mr. Ennis, that's a great report, and I will say in the past, you know, you always... The old saying goes, "No news is good news." Well, that's not particularly the case when it comes to this, when you have constituents, you know, wanting to know where we are.
Yes, sir.
And I really appreciate the clarification on a lot of questions that I've received over the past couple of months. With that said, one of the issues that has arisen that I never really had given a lot of thought to, and I've... And this has to do with your competitor, I guess you would... I don't know if Verizon's a competitor, but their fiber that they're running, several people have reached out and are concerned about the access to television. And you would think, well, you've got fiber, so what do you need? You know, they can't pick up their local channels. And this goes back to the franchise agreement that was signed with Comcast last year. With this fiber, is there any... Any intention to provide local TV or to pursue an additional franchise agreement with the county when it comes to providing television?
Well, two, I think, two different questions. So, one, our customer support representatives will help point folks in the direction of which, you know, streaming service they can use to replicate the local TV. So, a lot of local TV channels, you can stream online, but if you've never had the broadband to do that, you wouldn't have gone out to find out how to. So, we help people through that process, but we don't offer that over-the-top content. We just offer the broadband service. But we do help people sign up for how to access local content. Number two, for the franchise agreement, we don't intend to use a franchise agreement since we don't provide open video services.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Ennis? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, moving on. The board will consider authorization of the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds in the amount of $75,813 for replacement of AEDs. Yes?
We have a representative from Dominion Energy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You did mention that earlier. I had forgotten.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for accommodating our late request to be on this meeting. We certainly appreciate the time to go into a little bit more depth about Dominion Energy's rural broadband program, but if you'll bear with me for just a second, I do have to give a flash drive to Ms. Kim over here. All right, great. Sorry about that. So, yeah, I just wanted to give an overview of the rural broadband program and talk a little bit about Dominion Energy's middle-mile strategy. We are currently ongoing with construction in Culpeper County, and we do anticipate a fair amount of work to be done in the county in the next few months. So, before any questions are asked from customers or anything like that, I just wanted to give you all an update and see if I could answer any questions. So, Dominion Energy's rural broadband strategy is really rooted in providing the middle mile and being that internet facilitator. We are not an internet service provider, so we will not be charging our customers for internet. We'll leave that up to our internet service provider partners, which in Culpeper County is All Points Broadband, obviously. We're also working with a fair amount of different internet service providers in different areas of Virginia. We plan to install the middle-mile fiber optic cable along our existing overhead and in some areas, underground distribution lines. Think about it, it's like the larger branches on a tree, and the longer miles of fiber going out to rural areas, that is the middle mile. That's what we consider the middle mile, and that's what we'll be providing. Once we complete our middle-mile infrastructure, the internet service provider can go ahead and install that last mile service to the customer. And obviously, construction will be going on concurrently. Information sharing is, you know, also going on in between both of us in order to achieve our construction deadlines and make sure we get internet out to the customers as quickly as possible. As I mentioned before, we are working in a fair amount of different areas in Virginia. You can see we've got some territory in central Virginia, south side, out in Bodatot, and then also northwest, and a fair amount of internet service providers there as well. 20-plus counties, five ISP partners, and we plan to build more than 500 miles of fiber this year. So, it is a... It's a mammoth infrastructure project, but with excellent communication and ongoing work in between us and the ISP partner, we're confident that we're going to be able to meet all the deadlines and get internet out to these areas as quickly as possible. That's probably the number-one question I get from folks that call me. You know, when am I going to get broadband? And, you know, we're happy to say that in Culpeper, it's going to be very soon. So, in terms of Culpeper County, and actually, this map is probably familiar to you all. This is from Culpeper County's VADI application for the funding. But the initial routes that we plan to construct, so coming up in Q2 and the project we have currently ongoing, is a little bit to the east of Culpeper, in between Culpeper and Brandy Station. And then as we get further on into this year, we'll begin a little bit more south of Brandy Station and out in the different areas of the counties there. About 54 total miles, and again, a target completion date of Q4 in 2023. In terms of communications, you saw up there, I believe it was 522 customers. It's probably a little bit more at this point. Basically, what that communication is, is just an intro letter detailing the rural broadband program, the middle-mile strategy, and then naming All Points Broadband as our internet service provider partner. The reason we do that is we just want to notify the customer that they may see our contractors in the area as we move through the county to perform work. If you do receive a question from a customer telling you they did receive a notice from Dominion, just make sure that they follow up with the internet service provider, just to preregister with their website and make sure that they are in an area of internet service eligibility with All Points. You know, obviously, we do have to go through some already-served areas in order to reach the unserved areas of the county. So, a customer receiving this letter may be in an already-served area and therefore not eligible with All Points Broadband. We'll also notify customers at least two weeks away from construction, just, you know, letting them know that we're going to be installing fiber optic cable. And again, a little bit of detail about middle mile and naming the internet service provider partner as well. Just a picture here of some typical middle-mile fiber construction. This is actually out in Louisa County in the Green Springs area. And what you can see up there is our fiber is actually installed about six inches below the neutral in the supply space. And because we are the utility provider and we're attaching to our own poles, our middle-mile fiber will be a little bit higher on the pole instead of being in that communication space. You can identify Dominion Energy fiber with a yellow Dominion Energy tag. You can find that at every pole that we have fiber installed on. So, if you don't see that Dominion Energy tag on the pole, that's not our fiber. And, yeah, that pretty much does it for me, but I know that was quick. But like I said, I did just want to provide you all an update. So, if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them now. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. John, I'll turn this over to you. I think the sheriff's office has a request for some AEDs.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you might recall that just last month, we approved about $26,500 for replacement AEDs in county buildings throughout the various county campus of buildings that we have and requested use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for that effort. We've now received a similar request from the sheriff's office, who has a substantially larger number of AEDs than the county does, and to get theirs updated and replaced, which is necessary, they are requesting $75,813, which we are recommending be approved from the American Rescue Plan Act funds as well. Even after doing so, you will retain a little better than $2.4 million in available funds, which have to be spent by the end of next year.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the discussion.
Mr. Chairman, is it... When these AEDs, are they... I'm assuming they're like most things, that they have an expiration date on them, and after that point, they're pretty much useless. Is that right? Or is it something that we could donate to someone? Is there any use for them after the fact? Does anybody know if that were the case or no?
Mr. Bates, I'm not too well-educated, but I don't... I think their useful life has passed.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Board will discuss and consider the potential creation of a new business personal property tax category and rate for computer equipment and peripherals used in a data center. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We bring this item to you today for some general discussion, and there was some information that Mr. Raffamel put together for your understanding of where Culpeper County sits, and I'm going to ask Brian to come on up in case there are questions as we move forward in this discussion. But the state does allow you to create a separate classification for personal property tax for computer equipment and peripherals used in data centers. Several counties have begun to take advantage of that. I think Orange created such a category just this year and set a different rate for that type of equipment. So, we just wanted to bring this to you today, again, for general discussion, as we obviously do have a lot of data center activity in the county. Brian's effort was a series of tables. The first one, I think, just compares us with some of the surrounding counties, and then the following tables take a hypothetical situation where if you had a $500 million investment with 150 of that being real estate and 350 being personal property, what that would look like over five years, taking into account the depreciation schedules of the various communities. What Brian's table does not show is within tech zones, the 40% rebate that you would get that first five years of the life of the data center. So, that certainly makes a lot of difference as well, at least inside the technology zones.
So, first, just to show you how we compare across, because, for example, as you see Culpeper County, our rate is $3.50 per hundred. Loudoun's is $4.15 per hundred, but we use different depreciation cycles. Each county has its own depreciation rate. So, you can see as that goes through on that first page, two notes. Orange County has proposed the 125, and PWC has proposed... Prince William County has proposed a 215 for their tax rate. So, we're looking at current taxes. So, before you adopted the budget just now, if we would back up a couple hours, as you see, because our tax rate is listed at 55 cents. So, this is current FY23 tax rates, not anticipating changes that might be happening in each locality's FY24. So, if we go to the second page... Oh, no. Same document, second page, sorry. Oh, I could have done that. My apologies. There we go. So, if you look at the second one, I wanted to show how we look at if you take a project, a $500 million project. We've been accustomed to that. We've used that for a lot of our examples. If we had $350 million in equipment and then $150 million in real estate, which is a 70/30 split, which is pretty much what we're seeing, some will be... Have more equipment, less real estate. It's really hard to judge, so I had to pick some breakdown. What I want to show on this is our business personal property, as you can see, puts us at the highest, at $25 million over five years. A lot of times, they will refresh their equipment quicker than five years. They won't tell us what that is. We typically see three years is what we hear, but that can change as equipment changes. So, we're just going to show the five... I showed the five. So we're just going to show the five, I showed the five-year. It's, and also, it's not like our depreciation cycle in years four and five gets so low that we make up ground. It's pretty, ours is a pretty good gradual step down. Some of them have a pretty significant drop off, as you can see. For the real estate, our real estate tax rate, as you're aware, is lower than everybody else. That you have to take with a grain of salt again, because that's assuming the building will be assessed at the construction cost, which isn't always the case. So I just wanted to show, on the real estate, we're not going to make up a ton of ground at the end of, at the end of the cycle. We're still going to be showing the highest. That does not anticipate our incentive. Our tax zone incentive is 40%. It's very easy to qualify. You invest 10 million and you hire 10 people. Every time you do that, you can qualify. So if it's a phased project, in year one, they put in $200 million of equipment and hire 15 people, they qualify. In year two, they fill out the rest of the building and they put another $200 million in and hire another 15 people, they qualify again, and they'll have those stacked. So they'll consistently have those stacked. The incentive is for the equipment that they purchased in that year, which means if they get rid of the equipment in years four and five, we stop incentivizing. We've only incentivized what happened when you hired the 10 people and you invested the 10 million. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I have one question. So the real estate 150 million, that's just the building? That's not the actual land it sits on?
That would be correct.
So you're not, none of this takes into the account that in Culpeper County, you're buying 200 acres for 7 million, and in Fairfax County, you're buying that same 200 acres for many, many more million?
Two, yeah, over 2 million an acre, correct.
Right. So that significantly can skew the real estate numbers.
It could, but the real estate numbers, even just taking the building, if we go back one, let's see, a high real estate. Prince William County is $1.1075. So you look at Prince William, over five years, they're taxed, they're going to receive 8.3 million, and we're going to receive 4 million. I know 4 million is a lot of money, a lot of dollars, but when we're talking about 30 million, it's not skewing it but so much. That's the only thing. But yes, that will, real estate is going to skew it because our property is more affordable.
Would you advise us to create a separate tax structure, whether we change the rate or not, just to give us the flexibility?
You could do, you could do that. That would at least give you, you could also do that when you want to change the rate, if you would like to change the rate in the future. But we can, there wouldn't be an issue of adding a rate. Our marketing would just change from business personal property to data center equipment.
Yes, but the advantage would be that we at least would be prepared and could have the discussion each year about, do we want to change the rate or not? So giving us that flexibility, I think, would be very important.
I would have to agree with Supervisor Underwood that we're not having a blanket approach, that we can isolate this particular industry versus everything else. So I agree with him on that.
I agree to the fact, especially if we possibly lose the vehicles designation after this coming year, that it would allow us to adjust personal property on that side and not adjust data centers if that's what the board wants to do.
Brian, what kind of interest do we have from data centers coming into the county with the current structure that we have today?
Several. I mean, we have multiple properties that have had bidding wars. It's a robust discussion. It's the majority of my attraction job.
So with our current rate, with our current schedule, we have good, good interest, is what you're saying? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, what's happening is, we're being lobbied by user, users and user representatives. And I've been involved with several meetings myself, to where they're looking at other jurisdictions that, and comparing Culpeper. So some of the other jurisdictions, like Brian has documented up there, are selling themselves out, really reducing the rate quite a bit, which is normal economic development protocol, basically. I mean, and it's normal for these user representatives, intermediaries, to come to us and negotiate. And that's what's going on now. And in thinking about this, to me, I mean, I think we do need to set up the category, like Mr. Underwood and Mr. Bates has said, and maybe Ms. Cagino. And maybe in the future, near future, maybe we need to reduce it, maybe in good faith, the tax rate a little bit, just to show that we are open for business. But I don't know what that number is going forward, but the users need to understand that there's limited supply of land in Culpeper. Am I right with that, Brian?
Yeah.
Because, because this board, yes.
And that's why we're seeing the bidding wars.
Because this board has mandated going forward that we don't want any more data centers in the rural area, and we only have certain area that we want them in. And McDevitt Drive is, it's good space out there, where you can get several million or maybe a little bit more of space for data centers, but it's not, you know, a 2,000 or 2,600 acre industrial park that I think some of these jurisdictions have. So my message would be that we're open for business, and we only have a limited supply of land here. And if you want to be in Culpeper, we may reduce the rate a little bit going forward in good faith, but with our supply of land that we have being very limited, I think it makes us much more marketable for the location that we're in. We're in the middle of everything. And once the McDevitt land is gone, there's some, what, on Lover's Lane, at Wingspread, a little bit.
There's a little, yeah.
And that's it. And I think that's what this board wants. It wants a limited supply. It wants a, you know, five data centers or less with Amazon.
Campus, campus style, yeah.
Yes, campus style. And that's it. So I think it makes us more marketable, and I think that with that understanding, I think we can keep our rates a little bit higher.
And the one thing that works to our advantage versus some other localities is, we still get that moniker of Northern Virginia that matters in the industry. That's one of the things we lead with. I don't think we would think of ourselves, maybe, as we sit here, but when you look at the data center industry, it's important to be in that nucleus, and we're still considered part of that nucleus. That's a major selling point. That's a major reason why we get a lot of the calls we get.
And we are in a perfect location, in the middle of everything, just outside the blast zone. Is that still correct information, Brian?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, the comment that Brian just made about being in the nucleus of Northern Virginia, I think the people of Culpeper fully realize that, and when they look north, they see what they don't want. And I do not, for one, want to see us turn into the mega, whatever you want to call it, of a data center on every corner. And, you know, I'm leery, based off of some of the other industries that have come to Culpeper, that once the door was cracked a little bit, we're just inundated, and now we have a mess on our hands. So I think that we need to go into this thing with our eyes wide open. I think that the rate that we have right now is fine. I don't, I would not support lowering the rate at all. That said, this separate category that we're getting ready to implement, or vote on, I think that the Commissioner of the Revenue, Ms. Yow here, would probably have a couple concerns, and one of them would be the software that's required, that is going to be additional funding that would have to go to her office to update the software to accommodate that separate tax classification. So again, I agree that there's a limited amount of land, and this board as a whole has made it very clear that we want to see us preserve the rural characteristics of the county, so.
And we use the phrasing, we want to evolve, but not change, you know, we're not trying to, we, I understand if we're not a great fit for a client. I wish them well, and I got some other contacts that they can go reach out to. But yeah, we, we understand that quite clearly, and we make that clear, and it's clear in our strategic plan.
Mr. Chairman, I think we get sufficient interest from data centers in the county right now with the classifications that we have and with the tax structure that we have. I don't see a need at this time to, definitely don't see a need to change the tax rate, and I also don't see a need to create a new classification. I think that's something we should keep in our pocket for down the road if the time comes, but I don't see a need to make these changes at this time.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to follow up with that. I agree, and I think that the only reason you would create a new classification would be to lower that tax. And if you look at these tax rates, personal property and real estate, you're not comparing apples to apples. You've got apples and oranges and lemons and everything else here. So I think that we offer something that a whole lot of people do not offer. That's why we're being looked at. And if they were so great, why are these counties that have got so many of them and they're going up just like this, why are they in such bad financial shape? Answer that for me, if it's such a boom. It's either poor management, or they're not paying enough.
Probably a very important one to have is, are data centers net positives for the county? I'm under the impression that they are. And I firmly believe that, but if there's a story that there isn't, that somehow they cost more than the tax revenue that they're bringing in, I would love to understand the details. Because I, I'm under the impression that they are significant net positives for the Well, it depends on if, how many you have. So yes, I mean, there's a, we currently have one that's constructed and another in the planning phases. And we may have more interest, but we do have a defined area that has been mentioned multiple times. And to have the flexibility would do two things. One, it would signal that we're open to it. So to just send the signal that we may consider it probably helps Brian and Paige and others. And we're not adjusting the rate yet. We'll adjust the rate based on the will of this board relative to attracting more or fewer data centers in areas that's prescribed. So I make a motion that we set up a separate classification and do not consider any changes to the rates, but merely port over the rate that we have right now at the 350.
Mr. Chairman, if I could comment, I'm kind of looking at this on the other side of the fence. For the data centers, but as Ms. Cagino said, this personal property reduction to $3 on vehicles sunsets next year. And I would like to see going forward with this additional tax revenue, that we could not lower the rate for the data centers, but it would create a benefit to the people of Culpeper, whether we did a senior programs, you know, this has been one of the concerns I've had for the past four years. With the growth in Culpeper, those who have lived here their entire lives for generations or seniors are being pretty much priced clean out of their houses. And if we could have some program that would help benefit them, we've had programs that we've talked about, preserving farmland, these are all things that I'm hoping are going to be funded by the additional revenue of these data centers. But I would not support a separate category just to reduce the rate of a data center. I would support a separate category to maintain that at the current level, where we could benefit the citizens of Culpeper with offset and an increase next year, should that $3 go to 350 again on vehicles.
All right. Go ahead.
Second.
I would agree that we need to keep in mind what happens when we lose the special rate for automobiles this coming year, if that does in fact happen. If it does, I believe next year, we'll have the opportunity, is that correct, Sheila? We could make this change then and deal with it at the time. I view creating this category right now as the first step to lowering the tax on data centers. It may not be the intention, and I understand, Tom, that's not what you're saying. You're saying not to. But I think putting that out there just opens that door for us to do it in the future. And I think we should wait and open that door later on if we need to.
I mean, what are we looking at, cost-wise, time-wise, doing it at this point in time instead of doing it, giving them enough lead time to be able to prepare for this without being rushed, so that we ensure that it's done correctly and efficiently and effectively?
Maybe we could, but my understanding is, if it's not a different rate, then the current software will work. It's if it were a different rate, that the current software would have an issue, but I'd maybe.
Terry, you want to come in?
Mr. Chairman, while Terry's coming up, I did want to just clarify that to do the new category has been part of the motion. I think the proper process would be that we'd have to have a public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah.
Next month, and what we would advertise is creating this new classification and setting the rate, but setting it at 350, which is what it is now.
Okay, so I amend my motion for authorization for a public hearing.
Second.
Okay, so to answer your question, oh, are we? Which one's going for me? No, okay. All right, to answer your question, you know, every time you create a class code, then that really impacts everyone, including finance, including the treasurer, because when you create a class code, you have to have a description followed by the tax rate. So even if you don't change the tax rate, then I have to go into my records and change all of the equipment that meets that definition for however many businesses or clients, if you will, that are located in these centers. I'll have to change the class code on those, and it may mean also modification for the treasurer's bills in order to incorporate just that two-letter class code. So it will be workload that will be involved in order to do this, even if you choose not to use it. I will say, I, you know, I wanted to have this opportunity just for a second. I just wanted to share with you, while you're looking at those tables, that's been prepared for you all, I just wanted to share with you that those localities that have the $1.25 tax rate, there was a regional effort back in 2019 between Stafford, Fredericksburg, Carolina, Spotsylvania, King George, a regional effort to attract that type of industry there back in 2019. And some of your localities, Stafford, Spotsylvania, and Orange, that is contemplating lowering their rate also to agree with that $1.25, they're localities that have not been successful attracting a data center. And in talking to other localities that do, they are finding that the depreciation table and the tax rate pays, plays little to no role in attracting data centers. It's zoning, infrastructure, and as Mr. Rosenberg said, other resources for that locality. And you do have, you have Prince William and you have Falkir County increase their rate and change their depreciation schedule to what some may call less favorable. to what some may call a less favorable depreciation schedule. And I think Prince William is also increasing their rate this year for this type of industry. I just wanted to share those with you while you're discussing the research that I've done.
Additional code that we created, I guess, automobiles?
Yeah, that was a little bit of a workout. And the column comment, in our software, there's eight columns, and they're all used. So if you were to contemplate some rate, and I heard small adjustment, maybe by you, Mr. Dill, there's not a column left unless you use the ones that are already, unless you use a column that has a rate that you already have adopted, like 350, or 2, or 150, or something like that.
Okay, but the column would only be if it's a rate that's not one of the other eight, right?
Right.
So the column work wouldn't be a challenge if it is one of the other eight rates?
As long as we can add it, other than changing the class code I have on that property now. And keep in mind, my data is set up by depreciation schedule. So I would have to, each client, we would have to go in and change. So even if you do this this year, then we're going to have to figure out sometime to go in and take every year, including any that may be fair market value, we would have to go in and change all of those to this newly developed two-letter class code in order to accommodate what you're asking.
Okay. And the last time that was done was automobiles?
Last, yes.
Okay, great.
Just last year.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
I agree with Mr. Dur. I think it's a lot of work and effort for something that may not benefit or even cause us to be unfavorable here within this timeframe for this next upcoming tax year. And I think it's good to keep in our pocket, but I don't know if this is the right time to do it.
So I'm hearing defer from Mr. Dur?
Yes.
Right? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments before I call the question?
Just that the motion would be to advertise to get more discussion. We're not voting on whether you support it or not. We're voting on whether we ought to consider this. And it's a big enough issue for this county that I think it's worth considering.
Right. It's to advertise a public hearing. It is very important. Economic development is very important with all the expenses that we have coming up. And we've talked about those expenses for quite a while now. Schools, roads, fire and rescue, et cetera. So having that economic development revenue coming in, in the future, in the next 10, 15, 20 years, is going to be very important. So I don't know where we go with this, but I think we do need to keep planning for the future like we've been doing. All right, so everyone in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. All right, the ones that are opposing, please raise your hand. Okay, so passes four to three. Ms. Ellis with Ms. Cagino, Mr. Rosenberg, and Mr. Dur not in favor. Thank you, Brian. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Mr. Underwood, Public Works.
Public Works did not meet. As Mr. McLaren mentioned, we have been getting information back from the consultants. We will be meeting this month. And I've also met with some of the landowners in the Reba and White Shop areas.
Okay, Building and Grounds, Ms. Campbell?
The Buildings and Grounds Committee brings forward a motion toward a contract to AAR of North Carolina Incorporated to replace the roof on the main building at the Carver Center. The committee recommends inclusion of two alternates and the use of ARPA funds to cover the budget shortfall.
Can you get a second on that? Okay, further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Okay, Rules Committee, Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The Rules Committee brings forward a motion to advertise for public hearing amendments to the zoning ordinance to facilitate allowance of the keeping of chickens in the R1 Residential Zoning District.
Second. Just for brief discussion, that's coming forward with slightly different advertisement than has done from the Planning Commission because setbacks are not going to be in there, right?
That was the discussion, now whether that was the-
That's why I'm asking for clarification.
Mr. Bates, that was indeed the recommendation from the Rules Committee. So the version of the ordinance that's posted on Board Docs removes the setback.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Bates, B? You have another one?
We're going to vote on the first one?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I'm still, I'm still in Italy, I believe. All right, so we had a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, B for Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The Rules Committee brings forward a motion to authorize staff to submit a grant application to the opioid abatement authority. The grant would be administered through the RRCSB on a regional basis, with Culpeper County acting as its fiscal agent.
Second. Members of PD9 are thanking us for being willing to step up here.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, thank you, Mr. Bates. And Brian, Economic Development Director's report.
Yeah, looked up. All of a sudden, it was me again. So we have upcoming consultant conferences that I wanted to talk to you about. These hit our strategic goals, goal 1.1, retain and foster expansion of current major employers. Goal 1.2, grow the Culpeper County economy with attraction of new businesses. There's a couple of objectives that hit from both. First up is SEDC's Meet the Consultants, which is the Southern Economic Development Council, hosts an annual Meet the Consultants conference. Typically, these are in Dallas, Atlanta, Chicago, and New York. You are correct, those are not southern, all southern cities. The reason for those is that's where the consultants typically live. So try to make it easy on them. We go to them. Last year I attended in Dallas. This year will be Atlanta. The nice thing about this is the site selectors, as you can see here on the stage with my cardinal in the foreground, the site selectors, they just kind of tell you what they're looking at, what they're seeing. The discussion that's happening this current year, how projects are going, if you want a certain industry, what that industry is looking for currently. It's kind of a behind-the-curven view of the process. The next one that's going to be coming up is the Virginia Consultants Forum. That's going to be hosted by Team Virginia, which is a combination of Virginia Economic Development Partnership and the Virginia Chamber Foundation. And of course, the VIDA, which is the Virginia Economic Developers Association. I sit on the Board of Directors for VIDA. 125 participants from local or regional economic development offices are invited. I believe we invited a few utility providers as well. But this is going to be mainly for people actively participating with economic development. Fifteen to 20 of the leading site consultants will be there. And consultants will give presentations and have roundtable discussions in small groups of economic developers. Those roundtable discussions, we all sit at various tables. And then the consultant will hop from table to table. So you get 15 minutes at each table. It's kind of, some people have called it speed dating of site consultants. I love the term, but you kind of get the idea. It's a lot of fun. And this is the first time we've had Virginia Consultants forums, but I've been to previous conferences that are like this. And this is really where you can say to the consultant, "I have X. How would that best be heard by you?" And, or, one time, she came down and she said, "In Virginia, you all need to talk about this." This is the thing that, and that was the Talent Accelerator Program. She was just gushing about that, which is a state program through VEDP. So the reason why these conferences are important, we're often not privy to the process. You know, the process happens, we know a decision was made, but how did they get there? What were they looking for? Admittedly, site consultants of the grand total projects that are happening across America will work on a small number of those projects. But the process is the same, whether it's a site consultant or a company. Oh, I went, got too excited. The trends being seen right now are discussed, so that's really helpful. You're not waiting, you're not going, "Oh, in the last three years, this was the thing that they were, that companies were looking at." For example, the discussion around DEI and how communities can impact. That was a big part of Dallas's discussion. Preparing to handle large projects prepares us for the smaller projects or the expansion projects. Site consultants typically are not going to be working with our companies to expand locally. But understanding the process so that way, when we get that company that's in Culpeper County that says, "You know what? We need to build an extra space." Well, we're using the same mechanics, the same, the same process, and it's a relationship business. You know, it's easier to do business when we have a relationship with these, with these site consultants because we will have, as we're aware, we will have openings coming in our community in the coming years. So that's why I wanted to talk to you, that's what we'll be doing in May, both of those back-to-back weeks. Next week I'll be in Atlanta, and then the week after, for three days, and then Virginia Beach for three days. So looking forward to that. Another thing that happened last week was the Culpeper County Conference. We hosted that at Germana Community College. We had about 30 participants. The reason why I don't have an exact for you, 28 had signed up and showed. And then we had several walk-ins. We're still getting that information from the SBDC. But I have a couple pictures. I thought it was a fantastic day. The participants really enjoyed. Here's our general session. And then we also, lunch was from Deli Delicious. Breakfast was from Southside Coffee. They really enjoyed that. And then you can see here in this, it says, oh, I'm pressing wrong button. There we go. In this top, this is how the classrooms were set up. So we had a U format. This was marketing. I sat there for 10 minutes, and I thought it was fascinating. I wish I would have been there for the whole two hours. But the businesses really, we just heard over and over again, this was great. It was free. It was, you know, a low-stress environment for the businesses. They could come and just talk and hear the problems, hear the issues, and kind of talk through things. In the marketing one, they ended with, they each took an item that they had. You know, let's say, my notebook. And they had to go through the marketing, what they just learned in marketing, to how to market that item. Who are you trying to go to? Who, who'd be the best person to purchase this? How would you access them? It was a really, really great day. And we just sent the survey out. We're asking for more things that small businesses are looking for. And this, we have in our budget that you just approved, we have this to make this an annual event. So we're looking forward to next year. I hope, that's it?
Just for future reference, Brian, you may want to say that you're going to Suffolk versus maybe going, you're going to Virginia Beach. Sounds a lot better.
Okay.
You know, we don't like to sit up here and think, view you're down in Virginia Beach, you know. On the beach, it makes us think that you're on the beach with a pina colada in your hand or something.
Yeah, I can assure you, a lot of these, a lot of these conferences, my, my travel intentionally is that I'm only there for work, and to get back as quickly as I can, back home. But yeah, I'll be, I'll be attending Hampton Roads, so I'll be in Hampton Roads.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Welcome back.
John, I think you have a report, and I think it's something very important, part of that report today. So go ahead.
Couple of things, Mr. Chairman. I'll save the best for last. But I did want to make the board aware and publicly thank the Greater Piedmont Realtors Association. They, from time to time, are able to assist our planning efforts in the county by getting some studies done through grants that they get from the National Association of Realtors. They did a housing study for us a number of years ago that was beneficial. And this year, they were able to get another grant and used that to hire American Strategies to perform what they called a smart growth survey of Culpeper County residents. So all the results of that study, which, which I found fairly interesting, are posted on Board Docs. And I just want to draw your attention to them. The Realtors Association has offered to have American Strategies come and present the data to you if you desire to see that at a future meeting. Otherwise, you can simply read what's, what's on Board Docs. It's all there and well put together in a report. So I guess I'd ask for direction from the board on whether you desire to have any kind of presentation or you're satisfied with just the documents.
Well, the question would be, do we want to have more publicity towards the results or not? Because if we did, then we would have a presentation. If we just wanted to just it ourselves, we wouldn't.
And that's why I brought it to you in this format, as opposed to just scheduling the presentation, Mr. Underwood. I wasn't sure what your preference would be.
I think the, having it on Board Docs, it's available, it's sufficient. I do feel good about the direction that the board has been going and the concerns that we have addressed that this, this study supports what we've been talking about the whole time. But I think that keeping it on, just on Board Docs, that it's available to the public, if they want to pull it up and take a look at it, would be fine.
Thank you. Have consensus with that, John?
Okay. Item B is the great news. Kim, why don't you go to item B and pull up that, that one attachment there? I had the pleasure of going down to Harrisonburg to Kim's Municipal Clerks Association Conference Dinner the other night to surprise her. And she was surprised, I can attest to that, that she was awarded the Clerk of the Year Award for the state of Virginia. So I want to congratulate Kim on that. She was also- She was also elected, is it second vice president of the association for this year, which puts her in line for chairman in about two more years. President, sorry, president. Congratulations, Kim.
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn. We adjourn.